District in the amount of $138,861.[512.87-518.20][S03] This allocation is utilized to accrue state grant monies for operational expenses, and[518.20-521.41][S03] this amount has been included in 2004 general fund budget.[521.41-522.41][S01] Some move.[522.41-523.41][S03] Second.[523.41-524.41][S03] Discussion.[524.41-525.41][S03] Ms. Vacy?[525.41-526.41][S10] Aye.[526.41-527.41][S03] Ms. Blair?[527.41-528.41][S05] Aye.[528.41-529.41][S03] Mr. Moore?[529.41-530.41][S06] Aye.[530.41-531.41][S03] Under the Community Development Department, award various contracts to homeowners in[533.50-538.12][S03] Lorraine County for emergency home repair assistance from Lorraine County's Community[538.12-545.12][S03] Housing Improvement Program for fiscal 2003 to be paid from account 224032601450201.[546.79-551.25][S03] These homeowners will receive assistance in the form of a 0% deferred loan, therefore lien will be placed on their properties. One, Burge Building Company, Inc., in the amount of $5,566.96 for roof repair to Sheri and Jeffrey Tresh at 749 Maplewood Avenue, Sheffield Lake, Ohio. Four contractors responded to the county's request for quotations, but this was the best and most responsive. Two, Amero Heating and Cooling, Inc., North Ridge Road, Ohio, in the amount of $1,765 for a new furnace and flue pipe to Michael T. Hines and Rhonda J. Coe at 39648 Penny Lane, Carlisle Township. Two contractors responded to the county's request for quotations, but this was the best and most responsive. And three, Kaminsky Roofing, Inc., Alariah, Ohio, in the amount of $2,150 for roof repair and water heater replacement to Marion Koboscher at 133 Cowan Hill Drive, Amherst, Ohio. Three contractors responded to the county's request for quotations, but this was the best and most responsive.
Some move.[612.41-613.41][S03] Second.[613.41-614.41][S03] Discussion.[614.41-615.41][S03] Ms. Vacy?[615.41-616.41][S10] Aye.[616.41-617.41][S03] Ms. Blair?[617.41-618.41][S05] Aye.[618.41-619.41][S03] Mr. Moore?[619.41-620.41][S06] Aye.[620.41-621.41][S03] Under Chown Services, appoint David Flores as a member to Lorraine County Chown Services
Board, replacing Jeannie Marshari, who resigned. Term will be effective January 12, 2003 through January 13, 2006.[631.41-632.41][S01] Some move.[632.41-633.41][S03] Second.[633.41-634.41][S03] Discussion.[634.41-635.41][S03] Ms. Vacy?[635.41-636.41][S10] Aye.[636.41-637.41][S03] Ms. Blair?[637.41-638.41][S05] Aye.[638.41-639.41][S03] Mr. Moore?[639.41-640.41][S06] Aye.[640.41-643.62][S03] Under the Engineer, twenty, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for the resurfacing[644.41-648.12][S03] of Columbia West River Road in Osborne Ward in Lorraine County.[648.12-653.12][S03] Notice will be published in the Lorraine Journal on January 14 and 21, 2004.[653.12-657.12][S03] Bids will be open on February 4, 2004, 2:00 p.m. in the Commissioners' Public Hearing[657.12-658.12][S03] Room.[658.12-659.12][S01] Some move.[659.12-660.12][S06] Second.[660.12-661.12][S03] Discussion.[661.12-662.12][S03] Ms. Vacy?[662.12-663.12][S10] Aye.[663.12-664.12][S03] Mr. Moore?[664.12-665.12][S06] Aye.[665.12-666.12][S03] Ms. Blair?[666.12-667.12][S05] Aye.[667.12-668.12][S03] Receive the annual report prepared and submitted by the county engineer in accordance
Mr. Hess has a statement he'd like to make.
Thank you, Commissioner. Over the last few days, I have been in contact with the legal counsel for the petitioners and for the township. It's my understanding that they have been discussing some resolution of this matter, and they would like to request from the commissioners that there be a continuance because they believe they can work most, if not all, of the legal issues regarding this matter out. So what they're asking is that the presentation regarding the formal legal requirements and presentations on behalf of the township or the petitioners be continued to another time. We recognize that there may be, excuse me, there may be persons from the public or other persons that took time to be here to make their comments, so that if any of those persons would like to go ahead and make whatever comments they want today, we think they should be allowed to do that, or if they would wish to defer that also to a later time, that would be their choice. So for today, it's our request that everything other than persons from the public that would like to make comments regarding this be continued to another day.
Okay, so is my understanding then that the attorneys are not going to wish for any comments, the trustees or city officials will not, and I guess just the public?
I guess we should ask the city. John, are there any city officials here?
I don't believe there are any.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we just go through it real quick, and if someone has to, if you don't mind, Jerry, Minister in the oath.
Right.
Is there anybody that you just want, going to want to make a comment today? Okay, go stand and anyone else? For each of you swear that the testimony you shall give today shall be true, you shall answer under God or under penalty of law persons.
Okay, thank you. Do the attorneys have any comment? None? Okay, is there any township trustees present who'd like to make a statement? Okay, is there any city officials present who'd like to make a statement? Seeing none, is there anyone present in favor of this annexation wanting to make a statement? Okay, is there anyone present in opposition to this annexation wanting to make a statement? Please come to the podium, and good morning.
My name is Tim Mahoney, last name spelled M-A-H-O-N-E-Y. I'm the general manager of Rural Lorraine County Water Authority. Commissioners Moore and Vassie, thank you for the opportunity to address this public hearing. I am neither speaking in favor of nor in opposition to the actual annexation of the area in question, rather, I am here to speak about water service to the area. Although rural water is generally neutral with respect to issues of annexation, it is not neutral when it comes to protecting its territory for purposes of future expansion and growth. This area, in its entirety, is in the exclusive service area of Rural Lorraine County Water Authority, and the authority will not permit the installation of any water lines or the servicing of its customers or potential customers without its express written consent. All of this area's water needs have been successfully met by RLCWA. In fact, water in such large quantities is available in the area that Rural Water, on several recent occasions, has served water on an emergency basis to the city of Valeria. Lastly, please be advised that the Rural Water Authority enjoys the protection of the federal law and statutes regarding its territory, and any encroachment into a service area by the city of Valeria would be in violation of those federal statutes. If the Board of Commissioners is able to assure that the city of Valeria will not attempt to serve water to this area, Rural Water has no objection to the annexation. However, if the commissioners are not able to obtain such an assurance, Rural Water strongly opposes this annexation, and any attempt to serve it with water will be deemed actionable. I thank the Board for this opportunity, and I'm pleased to try to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Has there been any discussion with the city of Valeria?
We have received no communication at all. I guess my question, Commissioner Vassie, is, or to the clerk, in the information received as far as services to be rendered, is water service one of those?
It says under section 1, the city of Valeria will provide upon annexation to said territory at the rates and fees established by this council for such services, which services shall include police, fire, water, sanitary, sewer, and garbage collection, subject to the owner's petitioners, their successors, and assigns paying all costs to extend existing city's facilities to said territory, including but not limited to the payment of any and all capital recovery costs charged by the city for said facilities.
We have had conversation to answer your question, Commissioner, with the city, not particularly about this parcel, but an adjacent parcel, and have expressed in no uncertain terms our opposition to water service to that area.
So what I'm sensing you're saying is that this area is within your district?
Yes, ma'am, it is. As established by the Lorraine County Court of Common Poles.
What we're going to be doing is postponing this hearing for the, probably in about the next 60 days. I think it'd be appropriate for the attorneys to contact Rural Water, as he's nodding his head behind you. I think maybe we'll work this out by the next public hearing.
Thank you very much for your time.
Do we have a date set, Jerry, for the continuation?
I think we're looking at something 60 to 90 days from my conversation.
Okay.
I worked up the 60 days would be March 4th.
Thanks, Tim.
That's the 52nd day, March 4th. If you want to go further, we can go.
I prefer to go to that date because in case there is any issues. Is there anyone else in opposition to this annexation wishes to speak? Okay, so do we hold on a new date?
Wayne was here, did you want to hear a report, Wayne, the other way?
No? Oh, okay. No, he didn't.
I mean, the 87th day would be April 8th.
Yes, Wayne Mauretti County Engineers Office. We've only had, all our revisions that we requested have been made. The map and the description are correct, so we're satisfied. So everything's okay with us on that part. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, what's a good date?
March 4th?
March 4th would be the 52nd date, or...
You say 50?
52nd date. Or we can go to the 87th day, which would be April 8th.
Any choice?
I think 52 is a little bit closer than they were looking to go.
Yeah.
We're going to go longer.
John Kees Walker for the petitioners. Actually, either one of those dates are acceptable to me, but I know, in fairness to Mr. Schrader representing the township trustees, correspondence from him requested 90 days. Obviously, it's all subject to the Commissioner's scheduling. We'd be prepared for either date, so it's really up to the...
Closer to 90 days would be April 8th because it's the 87th day, and that would be the meeting prior to the 90th day, which extends beyond the Commissioner's meeting. March 4th was the 52nd.
Anytime's fine. When's the...
It's too early. Let's see.
Okay. Let's go, April 8th. April 8th, Commissioner, is that fine with you?
It's good with me. For the 73rd day, we can go on March 25th.
April 8th is fine.
April 8th.
I should give everyone enough time to get this worked out with the townships, the city, and Rural Water. Okay.
Okay, I would move to, oh, is there anyone else?
Do we want to do this again at 10:30 or 10:15?
Yeah, that's fine, 10:30. That's fine. So if nobody else has, do we have to close this hearing out, or do we just...
You need a motion. You need to make a formal motion to continue the remainder of the hearing until April 8th at 10:30.
I would move to continue the hearing till April 8th, 10:30 a.m.
No second?
Further discussion? Ms. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Continue.
Move to adjourn?
Second. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vassie?
Aye.
Board adjourned.
This year, Lorraine County has the privilege of taking part in a celebration that was 200 years in the making. We're gathered here today for an important event to break the mold of our commemorative Ohio Bicentennial Bell. This event holds a special meaning for me because breaking the mold in Lorraine County can apply to more than just the Bicentennial Bell. Breaking the mold is what our citizens and public officials are doing when they gather together to celebrate Ohio's unique 200-year history.
I'd like to welcome you to Ohio's 200th birthday celebration, to Lorraine County's 158th Fair, and to the 181st year of Lorraine County's founding.
On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, it's our pleasure and our honor to accept this on behalf of all the citizens and all residents, everybody in Lorraine County. This is your bell presented to you. Thank you.
One of the things that I was concerned about is whether or not in 2003, we'd be celebrating Ohio's past and thinking about the good old days, or whether we'd be talking about Ohio's future and the good new days. And I want you to know that I believe that the best is yet to come for our great state.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose bright stars and bright stars threw the battle that fight? Oh, the red flags we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
You have 13 and a quarter, 13 and a quarter where down here, I got 13 hundred dollar bills, boys, I tell you what, Ryan, that's pretty doggone expensive. 13 and a quarter where, I got 13 and a quarter where, 13 and a quarter, five, five, I don't know, don't ya? 13 and a quarter, 13 and a quarter, and you'll bring me a pie, then, won't ya? 13 and a quarter, 13 and a quarter, anybody else, I tell you what, if yours on, I'm gonna have to be... Appreciate you, probably.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Day 1 of Lorraine County's Ohio Bicentennial Bell Passing. My name is Fred Strapp, and it's a pleasure, myself, the Bicentennial Commissioner, for the purpose of being here at the 158th Lorraine County Fair. Thank you so much for coming. You've had a wonderful two days, and I'm proud of you.
I think that the icon of a bell in America, in Ohio, is something that is wonderful. First of all, with the foundry work, we honor our heritage in Ohio, our industrial background. But then the bell, it seems to me represents everything good about America. Obviously, the icon with the Liberty Bell, but more importantly, bells represent freedom of worship, bells represent freedom of speech, freedom of assembly. There's bells ring for every joyous occasion, weddings. There's also bells that ring for funerals. A bell rings for the New York Stock Exchange card every day. So I think the icon that Steve George chose as a bell for each Ohio county is a significant thing. This bell is free to the county, and it'll last 1,000 years. We think that's a great gift. Dinner bell, that's right. Certainly, how could I forget that? Looking at me, you can tell I don't give up dinner very easily. We start the process by inviting 40 to 50 of the local kids of the county to help us load small ingots of bronze into the furnace. So we start by loading the furnace with ingots of bronze. We use a propane furnace. And once the ladle is filled, we'll put the furnace back in the upright position, and we will snake the ladle off with the crane, lower it to the ground where we can skim off Now, this is the part that's not a lot of fun when you have 2,200 degree metal above your head. We then pour it into a sand mold, which we have created for the Ohio Bell. We are making a bell that is very beautiful, besides sounding good. Next event, we have a local dignitary take an 18-pound bronze sledgehammer and whack away at the sand mold. We give them a ceremonial three-whacks with a hammer.
Truth is, very, very important that whoever does this is weak enough that they not damage the bell.
Then we take over with jackhammers, sledgehammers, et cetera.
All right. She looks good. Ladies and gentlemen, Lorraine County's Bicentennial Bell. How about another round of applause?
Once the bell is free from the mold, we'll take four to five hours to clean it,
On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, it's our pleasure and our honor to accept this on behalf of all the citizens and all the residents and everybody in Lorraine County. This is your bell, we present it to you.
You know, we have the great generation that has fought and died for our country. We think it's wonderful to have them ring our bell first. Just wonderful.
Nope, nope, sorry, this is our 11th one.
This is our 15th one. Nope, nope, sorry, this is our 11th one.
It's kind of boring watching the grass, though, so we talk about what the big guy...
Well, the Ohio Bicentennial Commission was born in 1995 by order of the Ohio General Assembly. They charged the commission with the duty of celebrating 200 years of Ohio history, culture, science, and the commission then began the task of planning a bicentennial celebration. The goal was always to include every Ohio county in the celebration. And to do that, we really, it was a grassroots up, instead of a top-down, it was more of a bottom-up approach to the bicentennial, starting with the communities. We couldn't tell Clark County what to do from Columbus, but Clark County could tell us what they had in mind for the bicentennial. So that was really the tack that we took when we sat down and said, how are we going to plan the bicentennial? The beginnings in each Ohio county was forming groups in each county, and that's where our regional people came in, and they helped kind of light the fire in each county for the bicentennial. And that was kind of hard back then. There was not a lot of kindling to light a fire for the bicentennial, as you can imagine in 1997 and 1998. So we said, how can we get the word out? How can we spread the message of all things bicentennial? One of the original regional coordinators, her name is Nicole Moretti. Nicole is a wonderfully creative person from Megs County, down in the Appalachian.